This conference will now be recorded.
Like renewal intervention for the streetway, I would say move.
It's been moved, is there a second? Checked by Alderman Miller, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye as your name is called and all through our post.
Polly.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Randall. Randall?
He's muted, he's saying aye though he's...
Oh, I can see him. Lars?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, excuse me. Thank you. Resolution number 15, a resolution acknowledging the review of the 2019 CMAR compliance...
Yeah.
...recorded, thank you. Looking on memorizing that today too. Alderman calls please.
Thank you, I will make... Peter Jefferson, resolution number 15, resolution acknowledging the review of the 2019 CMAR, where is it a requirement of Wisconsin Flute and Discharge Illumination System, WPDES permit issued by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for the City of Jefferson to file compliance maintenance annual report by June 30th annually for its wastewater treatment system under Wisconsin Administrative Code NR 208. Where there is knowledge of compliance, be therefore resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the common council hereby informs the Department of Natural Resources that said council has reviewed the compliance maintenance annual report for the calendar year 2019. I would say move?
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Checked by Alderman Byer. Todd, want to come up here please?
Um, well, council members, so here we are again, that time of year, we have to recognize our review of our compliance maintenance annual report. This report is really a consolidation of all the reports we do monthly throughout the year for the DNR, and they basically kind of give you a letter grade on each category. It basically starts on page 35 of your packet, you go to page 59, that's kind of the summary of all the different categories, and proud to say again this year with hard work of our employees, we had zero exceedances and no violations, and just we got straight A's again with this report, so no action is required other than the acknowledgement. If anybody has any questions on anything, I'd be happy to answer.
Congratulations, Todd, three days again, boy.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Great, okay. Thank you, Todd.
Thanks.
If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of resolution acknowledging the review, please signify by saying aye, as a man that calls your name, all through our post.
Councilwoman Byer?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number 16, a resolution creating a fire district and designating Riverside Alley as a fire district, and also updating downtown streetscape conditions. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Jefferson, resolution number 16, whereas the county council for the city of Jefferson is subject to 50 feet, one seven and five, 196.58, 101, and 118.17. It's a grant of authority determined, certain conditions under which public facilities and any other company is confined in Wisconsin, such as many people in 017, 1018, actually by rights of legal and security. Whereas the city finds that in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, to establish fire districts within the city of Jefferson. Whereas the fire district is merely within the city limits, that due to a public, narrow right-of-way, facility falls in tail, collectively above ground facilities, presents a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare. It does accommodate a narrow right-of-way above ground facility, which is a fire setting up, resulting in more serious structural injuries, greater problems. Whereas the chief of the city of Jefferson Fire Department has determined that above-ground facilities located in the area of so-called River Beach, among Riverside Alley and Dodge Street, the community collectively Riverside Alley, create a special beach to facilitate their operation, the fire department, therefore, threaten the public health, safety, and welfare. Whereas the reflection of the above-ground facilities in Riverside Alley, the underground facilities, the protective public health, safety, and welfare, reducing the risk of life in the property, in case of a fire or other emergency. Whereas the city of Jefferson intends for their waterways to be overhead, to underground facilities and practical facilities in Riverside Alley, where all other facilities in Riverside Alley. Whereas the city of Jefferson ultimately intends to update, improve the current downtown city state. Now therefore, we result, the council of the city of Jefferson, Riverside Alley, if anybody declares to be a fire district. Public health, safety, and welfare require the removal of all existing above-ground facilities in Riverside Alley. City of Jefferson's municipal electric utilities, Jefferson Utilities, shall at a moment's length, include all of its above-ground facilities with particular design in mind. The place then, in its respect, appropriate underground facilities, several of those facilities fall in the area of River Beach, 2023. No later than June 30th, 2023, any company currently maintaining above-ground facilities in Riverside Alley shall have to address them, Jefferson Utilities, and let the company solicit, remove such facilities as desired, relocate such facilities underground, if the progress of Jefferson is good. The city shall cause to be made certain improvements to the downtown west side, Dodge Street, northeast, and South Street, and improvements to be performed no later than the 731st, 2023.
It's been moved, is there a second? Checked by Alderman Niles, discussion?
One question please. Are we going to Alderman, or are we going to Candice?
You broke up, can you repeat that, Vinnie?
Are we going only to Candice Street, or are we going all the way to Candice?
So, the, just for clarification, the alley project for Riverside Alley is going from Dodge Street to Candice, the mechanic street was part of the streetscape portion of that ordinance?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. Just clarification, thank you.
So, here's really the quick skinny on... So, the, the quick skinny on this project is, we talked about it at the last meeting, I said the goal is to come back, ask the council to adopt this type of ordinance, I think it was well crafted by Attorney Rogers who may want to make a comment. I think the letter that Ron wrote, which I think you had in your package, underspinning it was really, really good. Our goal is to give everyone two years to start cleaning up the alley from the abundance of overhead wires, and most importantly, not only for Jefferson Utilities, but they have several carriers that have blasted to the poles. This is the directive, I think, gives them the direction, the directive, and the incentive to take care of this at their own cost. We had a lot of issues when we did Firehouse Alley, we didn't quite follow this procedure, but this is really an order of the council, you know, directing a removal of something from public right-of-way with street control, and I think it's really the good thing to do, and I think it's good to do it now to give everyone two years, because it's pretty complicated. This is a complicated project, but Chris, I'd probably ask you just to say a comment or thing.
Just a few things, first of all, this is an ordinance, except for resolutions, but it's still not just an order of the city. The only other thing I would add is, if the council proves this resolution, then sign copies of the resolution to go out to all companies that have above-ground facilities in the Riverside Alley, affected by the president.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments from the council? Nope. Nope, all good? Okay.
Three forward.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor, please signify by saying aye as your name is called and all through our post.
Alderman Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Next we'll move on to a discussion regarding the fire station improvement project. Tim, you want to lead this off?
Ron, I think, I think, yeah, you're gonna have to come up here a little closer.
I'll slide over.
So, I'll just, I'll just start, you'll really want to hear from Ron and Ron's guest tonight, but this is a project that our facilities committee has been discussing since the spring of this year. Most recently, we met several weeks ago, at the conclusion of that discussion, the facilities committee is generally recommending the project that we hope to describe to you tonight. First of all, I will tell you that it's one that does require some planning, it's, it's a project that we would anticipate occurring probably starting the spring of 2021, and most all of it, if not all of it, is down at the fire station, and just very quickly, I'll just summarize it, and then I'll turn it over to Ron. But per the memo that is in your packet, the projects include repair of the existing host tower, and re-cladding and parapet wall repairs, reconstruction of the interior garage trench drains, and the outside approach basement at the fire station, some additional exterior cladding repair and maintenance, some front building elevations, and then it would include the installation of solar, or a roof system, photovoltaic system on top of the fire station. And generally speaking, I would say, we're interested, at least as a staff, and I think the facilities committee as well, picking the right municipal facility, to start with rooftop solar, with the idea, if successful, we would introduce that, and also add it to existing municipal buildings and facilities in years down the line. What I just described to you, carries a price tag of about $495,000, when you include design and engineering, and the firm that we've been working with is Building Envelope, they're the ones that did the design on the Police Department Jefferson Utilities Building that was completed about a year ago, and also hiring a construction manager, that would be Moss Brothers, the price tag increases to approximately $570,000. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Ron, but I'll come back to how this gets paid for, because this is going to require a city borrowing, more likely than not, a bond issue, and I'll talk about it. And as a segue for Ron, I would generally say, these are projects that the city has included somewhere in our five-year capital improvement plan, that's the one the finance committee spent a number of years putting together last fall, we're just bringing everything forward to do it a little sooner, so.
Many of you have toured the facility and have already been involved in discussions about what we have going on, but for those of you who have not, I'll give you a quick tutorial. We continue to have water intrusion issues into the interior structure around the host tower, and we've had the roof replaced in that area, we've had continual dialogue with the vendor, Wanache Roofing, that did the roof repairs there, and yet we're continuing to have water issues that are leaking in through the wall. Through some further homework, and I got Doug Belkey come up and take a look from Moss Brothers, it was his opinion that we were leaching through the ephes, and that we were having the water intrusion issues as a result of the 1983 version of ephes insulation. So with that, we were directed to Tom Grendetsky from Building Envelope, Tom Szentzke's group out this fall, they came up, did tomography studies of the building, and took a look at all of the substrate of ephes around the structure, and have determined that we do have substantial moisture in behind the ephes, up against the block in the building. It's the way that ephes was installed in 1983, it was the technology that existed at the time, and as a result, we've learned a lot since 1983. That installation, the way that it was conducted back then, is probably not appropriate for weather conditions here, and as a result, they do a lot of this type of work in order to trade things out, change things out. So on the exterior of the building, we have substantial damage to the ephes, which is allowing water to get in between, up against the block, and then it is leaching through into the building. Eventually, this is going to have a structural issue on the building. Through the studies that they did, they have determined that they need to strip the host tower in its entirety, along with most of the back portion of the building, the parapets that come up over the top around to the front, and we know we have water intrusion issues on the front elevation, right on the very face of the building where the windows are. When we had the new building put on, when we had the gutters put on the building, and they drilled into the ephes in that area, we have water that, Bill's group came and did that work, we have water that came shooting out, so we know we have water trapped in, in that area. It is their recommendation, and Facilities Committee was briefed on that back this winter, that all of that area needs to be torn off. Well, as part of our ongoing discussion, while we were working with Doug on the issues related to the, to the ephes, we had a trench drain collapse. In the building, there are three trench drains, there's 60 feet, they run east and west, 180 feet of trench drain that runs underneath the apparatus. One of the drains had been cracked, the front, or southernmost drain collapsed. So Doug came again, and took a look at the installation, and really where we're at is, again, it's a 1983 installation, that has had a lot of road salt over the years from trucks being washed off, and the structural there has eroded, it is finally broken down, and as a result, we have two trench drains that are currently collapsed. They haven't fallen in in their entirety, the third one to the north is in deteriorating condition but has not broken. We do know that we may be at a point coming up here where we're gonna probably have to purchase some plate steel to be able to span that over the top of that area, because we've got 90,000 pound trucks sitting on top of that. When we pulled the prints on that portion of the construction from 83, it seems like a simple trench drain that you would run into perhaps in your garage, etc., but what we learned in the construction, those trench drains are three feet deep, there's a three-foot concrete base underneath those, and it was all poured in one shot, when the building floor was poured. So it requires them to come in, saw cut on either side of the trench drains, remove all of that concrete and material, and then reconstruct, rebuild, re-pour, re-epoxy over those areas. The front apron on the building was in the capital plan already, I will tell you, I had underfunded it, but it was in the capital plan, we do have the rebar that is pushing through on the front apron surface as well. So, I've been working with Bill on that issue for well over a year, and we've determined that if we're going to do this project and have to be relocated out of the building, the ephes and the trench drains, and the apron are all issues that have to be repaired. So we would do that all in one, all in one shot, we will need to leave the building, perhaps in excess of a month, for this work to be done. Right now, in the commercial building climate, we're kind of at the peak, everybody's schedules are full, we don't believe that we're going to incur any additional building damage by waiting and bidding this project out, when contractors can get this in their normal schedule, the normal scope of work for spring 2021, and we enter a more competitive process versus people trying to get it in, and they're gonna bid the work, if they're gonna bid it, they're gonna bid at high, if they get it, they'll figure it out. And again, I've talked about already what we need to do, if we have issues with the trench drains, we will be able to span that with some plate steel. In addition to the host tower exterior, we have interior damage that is done, so if you were to come in, I can, for those of you who haven't seen it already, I can show you the way, the paint, actually the concrete, the block is, I don't want to call it eroded, but is calcified, on the interior of the block surface, all the way up the wall of the host tower. That needs to be cleaned, and brought back to fresh, and then repainted again. The host tower has not been painted since 1983, when the building was constructed originally. On the front surface of the building, where we had the water intrusion issues, we're going to lower the front windows and do the repair there, and bring those windows down, and that's part of the scope of this as well. That's kind of one phase of what we have to do to the building, and those are issues that are building deterioration, building repair issues. The other component of this project was, in part of the five-year capital plan, when I was asked about, what do you have for future ideas, the solar system for the building, we had looked at that when we constructed the EMS building, and elected to not spend the money and go down that road. Tim has talked to me many times about opportunities on the city side for solar, our building really fits that niche the best of any of the city buildings. We don't have trees over the top of us, we're never going to have trees over the top of us, we really have a structure in which it would be conducive to this type of an installation. It was included in your five-year capital plan, again, we're looking at including that all in this scope of this big project. I've been working with Chris Collins from Sunvest Solar, Chris is here tonight, to be able to answer technical questions for you on solar, an area that I'm a little bit versed on, from the insurance risk management side of the world. Sunvest is a vendor that has worked with one of my largest clients, and it had the largest solar rooftop system in the state of Wisconsin. They come highly recommended from, again, a client of mine, that has a very sophisticated system on their roof, and so Chris and his team were the ones that provided us with those numbers when we were going through the capital project last year in July and August, and we would look to retain their services to be able to help guide us through this project for here. So, any questions that you have for me, I'm gonna say on the structural side, and then I'm gonna ask Chris to talk about solar, but I want to get your questions on the structural stuff before we would go down the path of solar.
Yep. And so I see that the host tower, before it comes back, and that's for the big water project. When did you start this project? When was it?
Two years ago.
And?
Yep. We had a $50,000 capital expenditure two years ago to put in the asphalt and we worked on the building. At that time, we did look into solar, and again, elected to not go that path at that time, but it was researched back then. Other questions on the structural side, if any? To my TV audience at home, any questions from any of you there?
And the water, is it best-case scenario to replace that? There were many buildings built with nothing but sealed concrete block in the past, it seems like by replacing the ephes, we're just inviting another environment that can trap water down the road. Is this basically cosmetic on the exterior? Understand the structural issues, but as far as trying to create another layer to trap more moisture, is that the best way to go?
We talked with Tom about that, and we talked with Doug about that, as did the two facilities group, they both recommend that that's still a good way to replace that, and today's systems, they do a lot of that replacement. Doug could explain more of the technology of the vapor barriers today and standoffs and such, but they believe that's still a suitable substrate to put on the exterior of the building, and again, what's, what's been there has lasted since 1983, and buildings continue today to be built with that, and they're, they're comfortable with that recommendation.
Understood, but such a test, because we just, Police Department, you know, etc., so I don't think that's a bad timetable, like you said, since 1983, still want to make sure things are done as well as we possibly can.
And it's one of the recommendations for the construction management from Tom's group and or from Doug's group, because they have that expertise to be able to monitor the installation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So Chris, I'm gonna have you, if you would, come up, and guys, I had a handout, unfortunately, you're not gonna have it at home, we will get it to you. This is Chris Collins with Sunvest Solar, Chris is gonna do kind of a quick overview of what is the proposed solar for our, our building, and the reasons why it is designed the way that it is, limitations, and, and the like, so I'm gonna let him do you an overview, you can fire solar questions at him that I can't answer, so, Chris?
Thanks a lot for having me. I'll start with the system size, your utility here is part of WPPI, Wisconsin, I'm not sure what it is, Public Power, and they have a, what's called a net metering limit, so 20 kilowatts AC is the net metering limit, and what that means is that if you stay at 20 or below, anytime that you send power back to the utility, you'll earn your full retail credit for whatever you're paying for your electricity. If you go above that 20 kilowatts, then anytime you send power back to them, your credit is at the wholesale rate for power. I looked, before I came, your utility rate is about 10.4 cents per kilowatt hour, the wholesale rate is around, I think it's about three cents for WPPI, so I just wanted to start there, that is why the system size is what it is. The second thing I wanted to mention is that the incentives that are outlined here, the focus on energy and the WPPI grant. Focus on energy started the year with a, I think it was a, either a five and a half million or a $5 million budget, and solar is booming in the state, so everybody's been going after those incentives. So, probably a month ago, in order to extend that budget till the end of the year, they slashed the amount that they're awarding, so I'm putting in there what is the current incentive for a system this size, but starting January 1st, that could bounce back up. When I originally did this last year, that incentive was $10,000, give or take, so, you know, that, that could change, come, come the start of the year. The other one is the WPPI grant, they aren't currently offering a grant, right now I have it at 25% of the contract amount, but since they aren't offering it, that's an assumed number, I don't know, you know, if they're gonna offer the same amount, but whatever that is, I know the folks at WPPI very well, and I would find out exactly what the maximum amount you could achieve, you know, with your system for an incentive from them. you know, with your system for an incentive from them. Um, as far as the production of the system, um, uh, that would be at the very top. Where estimated year one production is 29,091 kilowatt hours. Um, solar production is provided, uh, from the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. We, uh, have a design tool that plugs in the, the size of the panel, the wattage of the panels, the tilt angle that they're at, the direction they're facing. And based on data from the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, we can determine, uh, estimated production, uh, for, you know, every year and every month. Uh, obviously some years, depending on weather, it's going to be a little bit worse. Some years it's going to be a little bit better, but that's a baseline number that is conservative at that. Um, one of the, uh, uh, interesting things you learn in the industry is that some people, in order to sell more solar, will, will bump those numbers up and provide more optimistic numbers. Uh, sometimes I don't think they're always realistic, but, but that is, uh, what the case is. Um, and as for the cost of, of the system, this is an estimated cost. I haven't seen the building, I haven't seen the electrical tie-in, I haven't seen where we run our conduits. So this is a conservative number to give us an idea of, you know, a basic idea of cost and what the incentives would be. Um, so, uh, those are the items that affect that 14.4-year payback. If the focus on energy incentive returns to its, you know, normal base, this would probably drop to down around 12 years. Uh, the, the challenge is that for most solar electric systems right now, there's a 26% federal tax credit because it's a nonprofit, you can't take advantage of that. Um, system design life is 30 years. So, uh, we have, um, flash attachment points that, uh, attach to the rafters supporting that roof. And there's a flashing over them that covers the penetration point. And then there's, um, aluminum rail that runs, uh, east and west that the panels attach to. So the panels sit about three or four inches above the roof. And then all of the DC connections come together and run to, uh, what are called inverters that change the DC power to AC power. And they would match the voltage and phase of the building. So it would just offset the usage of that building. Uh, whenever the solar is producing more than the building is using, the utility knows that it's there, they, everything is UL listed. So it would flow to the utility and in effect turn the meter backwards and you would earn a credit. Of course, this depends on the usage patterns of the building. But based on the, uh, utility data I was given, uh, the system would, uh, cover about 39% annually of this building's consumption. Um, I think that's kind of the quick overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions there. What would be a metal roof preferred on this system?
Um, a metal roof, if it was standing seam. Uh, and by that I mean a three-eighth inch standing seam that sticks up there. Are clips that attach to that? And then there are no penetrations on the roof. But we have very few leaks with the system that we have. And if there were questions about it, we would definitely, uh, have your roofing contractor look at this and make sure that they're comfortable with it. We don't want to avoid, you know, two-year-olds.
There are no rafters in that roof, that's a voice system.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering how you would attach to the roof system.
Oh, so part of, part of our, uh, you know, services is design services, is we would get the as-built plans of the roof and determine the best way to attach to it. We have to hit something structural. There must be something structural under it that holds it up that we would find a way to attach to.
I just.
We shingled, so then we have to, you know, disassemble the system, re-roof the, the roof. And then we have to put the system back on. And depending on labor rate, that would be, I would say today, probably three to $5,000 for that, for that. But you're essentially disassembling and reassembling the system. So that would be the, the, and that's a ballpark idea.
The timing for the new roof is good.
Correct.
Now we have. The panels are, uh, pretty impervious to hail. I mean, it's essentially a car windshield, it's, it's low iron, untempered glass. So I, I've been doing this for 15 years and honestly, I am still on single digits of panels that are damaged by hail. So it's really rare. Um, there's a, we provide a full structural analysis of the roof and the system combined together that's stamped for plant reviews to make sure that, you know, it's not going to exceed the weight loading. Um, if it's a true standing seam roof, so is, is that this building here?
Yep.
Um, we could do that, uh, there's, so is that pitched? It looks like it's pitched to the east.
A little bit, no, sorry.
This is pitched up or is that that roof?
That roof.
Um, if that's a true standing seam roof, that would make sense. That'd be a great idea. I don't know, it looks like you could almost fit the same size system, so that's a great idea. Um, if it's a true, um, pitched roof, it would be almost the same. The, the attachment to a standing seam roof is the same cost.
But you know that single roof currently is not going to last 10 years, like it's just a roof.
Correct. I'm not sure how we arrived at that roof. But it can go on either roof.
Initially started, we added on both.
Right. Exactly. So, um, I, as much as I'd like to sell a bigger system, it just doesn't make sense, uh, to put more on. I just actually met with someone in Green County and someone had given them a quote for 300 kilowatts. And we have another tool that looks at peak kilowatt demand versus the solar kilowatt production. And it just didn't make sense. There would be too much of a time, it was like a 35% export of the solar, which means that 35% of the power produced would be credited at three and a half cents a kilowatt hour, which is, it doesn't, doesn't make sense. Um, there is monitoring with it, so we can see what the system's doing at all times. If there's a fault or something, we get fault alerts. Um, and, you know, sometimes it may be, um, it typically isn't a panel. The panels are warranties that deliver, 80% of their rated output at 25 years. Um, but typically there may be something with an inverter that goes wrong. Uh, the inverters have a 10-year warranty. Um, so typically, you know, if, if there's an issue, it's usually with an inverter. Um, but we do have a way to monitor the system and you would have access to that as well. Um, there's more extensive data where you could have, uh, you know, depending on how much you want to promote this, um, some places I've worked with, they have a, you know, monitor somewhere or even online where it shows, uh, what the solar produces is one line and what you're buying from the utility is another. So you can see whenever the solar is overproducing versus the utility or, you know, vice versa. That is, it's pretty simple, uh, to understand, data monitoring.
Is that something that will be available for Jefferson Utility and WPPI? You know, that, that like real-time monitoring?
Well, there will, there will always be monitoring of the system, of the production, but adding the consumption of the building, I don't have that included. It would be.
It's just because I know that Jefferson, the future of the sunroof building, this is just, I don't want to say experiment, but it's the first of its time for the team. And for future projects, we have monitoring that would show it exactly. Like it feels like it's doing its own study as it goes.
Exactly.
I have read that there are inverters that do that.
There are absolutely inverters that do that, yes. No, the inverter would have monitoring that would show what it's producing, but adding consumption to that, showing what the building is using is an additional cost. Because you have to add more sensors, uh, current transusers called CTs in the electrical panel to measure the building's consumption. So there's a couple of different platforms. And some, I have found that the ones that are typically supplied with the inverting manufacturer are nice and they're less expensive, but they're harder to understand. There's another program called E-Gauge that I promote all the time because it provides, uh, production and consumption in real time, uh, per day or three days, per week, two weeks, lifetime. And, uh, you know, again, it's available anytime if you want to pull it up and look at it. Um, and that one, if you're doing a study or even if you wanted to know what some device in the building was using, you could put it on real time and turn that device on and you'd be able to see the instantaneous, instantaneous, um, you know, wattage of that device.
Right. But that's not included in this system?
It is not. Uh, it's about 2,500 watts. Yeah, it's, it's not, that's not. And during any month like this, once you buy E-Gauge, you own your device forever. E-Gauge has been around for about, uh, about eight years. And, uh, the first time I sold one, they were on device 400. And now I think we're on device 39,500 or something. So it's, it's really south stuff. Go on there or if, I'll leave my card and I can send links, uh, to some sites. We, we actually have it on our headquarters in Milwaukee that shows what the office is using and what the solar on this first roof is producing. And, uh.
I'd be free to go out and look at, at their website and look at the process. Um, John Co. 181, I'd be very good to look at.
Yeah, I think it's interesting, I think that was the largest rooftop in the state. Um, we surpassed that in 2018 with Madison Area Technical College. So John Co. had about, uh, I'd have to say about 900 panels. MACC got 5,700 panels. And now we're about to surpass that one with the system we're doing on the home manufacturer in Milwaukee. 15,000 panels, so. Systems are just getting bigger and, you know, years ago I sold a system that was 44 KW on the, or the ecology center in Milwaukee and that was the largest in the state. That was, that was 2,000. But it's just been a steady curve up and the equipment's getting more efficient. Uh, one of the things that I mentioned was the, um, warranty on the inverters was 10 years, some have 12 years. But let's say in eight years, that inverter, you know, one of the puts, um, you would probably get a completely different inverter. You know, the, the technology is probably evolving the fastest through the inverter technology.
I love this. The, uh, the, the rate of return.
Yep. Um. Most of the customers I deal are, are commercial customers that own their buildings. So most of the ROI's I see are five, six, seven years or four, six years, that range. But for a public facility, it really varies. You know, it really depends on your electrical rate. Um, residential systems are usually around 12 years or 10 years, it depends. Um, so it isn't great, but the fact that Jefferson isn't going anywhere, as I know, and, uh, I would say that it's, you know, it is what it is, basically. I, I guess I don't, it isn't horrible. The fact that there is a return rate is really what I think is more important. If you buy a boiler or a chiller or something, you buy a new one in 20 years. You know, whereas once this is up there and making power, other than possibly an inverter in 15 years, which is, you know, $3,000, I don't know at the time, but that is one half of that.
That's.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay.
All right, we'll go hide in the back row and we can.
All right.
All right. Girl, head out of here.
So this is really going to be the quick skinny, the orange going late. So we surely is a financial consequence for under, uh, based on what we just, um, described. And I would generally say in our current five-year plan, you know, we're in year one of that five-year plan. We had anticipated two borrowings, one we've done. The second we've anticipated, and we scheduled the debt we issued, um, late last year and anticipated scheduling the debt we'll issue in 2022. Uh, to do so in a manner to replace debt that we expected to pay off. So, uh, even though it's a lot of money we'd be borrowing, there's a little, little impact on the property owners, um, in terms of, uh, of, um, of what we levy for debt service purposes today. So what we took a look at is, uh, if all of a sudden we add a, um, new debt issuance of about $570,000. You know, we looked at, how can we do that so we don't create a significant adverse impact on, on the property owner? And generally without really, uh, getting into the numbers too much, you know, it is possible to do that. Um, we have some flexibility how the, uh, debt would be scheduled. And I'll just take you through it real quickly. We won't spend a lot of time on it. So, um, the first page, um, that second column where it says 2010-2, that's the borrowing we anticipate, uh, a couple of years down the line. And there's a description in the left-hand column of what that money would be used for. Um, that is also the borrowing we would replace chemistry, which we're doing next year essentially with that block grant money. We would replace our alley project and downtown streetspeed project and do that in 2022. Um, but the project that we just discussed tonight is really showing AI the 2021 column. So you can see, to do what we just described, it's anticipated about $570,000. And of course, then, you know, you have issuance costs. You have to pay bond council, financial advisor. Um, um, you'll want to have paid the debt. Um, so, you know, the total sum we would look at, um, is approximately $620,000. So that's what we have to take into account and that's what we try to do, um, uh, the next two pages. So the, um, next page shows how the city's general obligation debt is currently scheduled. The most important column for you guys to look at is the second column from the right-hand side where it says net rate for total debt service. Everyone see that? Starts with $1.87 per thousand in 2019. Currently in 2020, we levy for debt service purposes $1.74 per 1,000 of our equalized value in the community. And then you go down, you can see that number tending to decrease over time. And that's generally because most of our debt is relatively short-term, 10-year debt or less. And it pays off pretty quickly. Um, so we would be looking at scheduling the repayment of this issue to work with that schedule so we don't exceed, uh, what we're currently, um, levying the debt purposes, uh, on the property debt pay. So the next page shows what happens when we add a de-bond issue, $620,000, plus the issue that we had last fall, plus the anticipated bond issue in 2022. plus the anticipated bond issue in 2022. When you go over to that same column, that's net test, a net rate for total debt service. And you compare that column with the one I just showed with the existing, that's generally how we would choose to schedule this debt to really not create an impact about what we're currently levying for debt service on our property debt pay. We'd be looking at approximately a seven-year issue, how we would schedule it. There's this column right here.
Can you call out so that they know which column you're talking about?
Yep. It's, for those of you at home, it's the column that's titled levy portion $620,000 dated 3/1 of '21. And it's about seven years of principal and interest payment. I would generally tell you, you look at that interest rate compared to maybe two months ago when we had really dealing with COVID-19, the bond market was pretty royal. If you're going to borrow money today is the time to do it. You can see the interest rate. You know, I've been doing this for 37 years. These are some of the lowest rates that I've seen in the municipal bond market. Now, by the time we do this, it could change, but Dawn actually added about three-quarters of a percentage to this, knowing that we would borrow in the future. So if we issue tomorrow, it's probably even lower than that. So it's really a tremendously good time to do it. So the quick story I have is unless something changes in the next six, seven months, if, if you guys choose to underwrite this project, you know, I think you could do it, borrow the money probably attractively. I don't think the bond market's going to change that much. And schedule the debt to not create a negative impact on our property debt pay. So lastly, I would say, Ron, in terms of if we had a recommendation for the council, it would generally be from what I initially described in, in my memo, to break out the solar piece, if we do the solar piece, and not make that subject to a contract with Building Envelope. Meaning don't have them design it, have Chris's company design it. They can do it a lot cheaper. And then have it constructed separately, distributed as a separate project would be the most, I think, efficient way to do it. But then as the next step, look at and consider a contract from Building Envelope to design the project that Ron had described, followed a little later by a contract with Moss Brothers as a construction manager. That's how we would suggest. And we would probably suggest we retain Building Envelope late summer, early fall to do the design work in the fall. Bid it out maybe January before contractors filled up their construction schedule. Bid it out January or February. Let a contract and start the project as soon as the weather gets nice and spring, late spring, early autumn. That would be how we would suggest, I think, Ron. So facility committee members, did we adequately summarize our last discussion? So I think there you have it. I think we'd answer any questions and there's no votes tonight, but I think what we'd like is your consensus to tell us, yep, let's go ahead and do this. And then we'd work with people like Chris's company to get proposals as well as Building Envelope to do the design. No, it's attractive time, that's the darn truth. So Bill, Vinnie, Rich, any comments for us?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
Ron, Dale?
Yep.
Dale? You're a committee member. You're already voted, yeah, you're already voted, I've put it recommended.
I'm good with it. I was glad to get my solar answered. So that was great.
Probably, probably you were on the committee. So Ron?
We're forward.
Thank you. All in the team, emotional adjournment. Don't move.
Second.
Come move for second. Our voice board, all in favor, say goodbye, would say aye?
Aye.